All right, you are good to go.
Okay, we're going to reconvene the special meeting of the City Council for September 24th, 2024. Mr. City Attorney, is there anything to report out?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. No final action tonight.
Okay, we're going to bring to a close the special meeting then and bring to order the regular meeting of the Folsom City Council for Tuesday, September 24th, 2024. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
And Councilmembers Aquino?
Here.
Rodriguez?
Here.
Rorba?
Here.
Kozlowski?
Also here.
And Councilmember Chalantchela is absent.
All right, if everybody will please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite and just as well.
All right, excellent. We are going to take the agenda slightly out of order in order to clear the deck of our Joint City Council Folsom Redevelopment Successor Agency. So I'm going to call to order the Joint City Council Folsom Redevelopment Successor Agency, Folsom Public Finance Authority, Folsom Ranch Finance Authority, and the South of 50 Parking Authority Meeting to order. Once again, will you please call roll?
Councilmembers Aquino?
Here.
Rodriguez?
Here.
Rorba?
Here.
Kozlowski?
Also here.
And Chalantchela is still absent.
Okay, we have a single consent item.
I'll go ahead and move items 12. If nobody has any comments or questions.
I'll second.
Okay, is there any requests to speak on this item?
You have no request to speak on this item.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Right, Councilmembers Aquino?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Rorba?
Yes.
And Kozlowski?
Yes. Please call the next item.
Okay, your one and only public hearing on this joint meeting agenda is item number 13. This is the Folsom Ranch Financing Authority, City of Folsom, CFD number 18, Folsom Plan Area, Area-Wide Improvements and Services. This deals with special tax revenue bonds, Series 2024. Before each and every two resolutions, Resolution Number 11266, a resolution of the City Council, and Resolution Number 012, Folsom Ranch Financing Authority.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. Stacy Tumani, Chief Financial Officer. Tonight I'm presenting the Community Facilities District Number 18 Special Tax Revenue Bonds, Series 2024. For a little bit of background information, the City Council approved the formation of CFD 18 on December 8th of 2015. In November of 2018, change proceedings were completed to amend the rate and method of apportionment for CFD 18. This improvement area provides for the construction and acquisition of certain backbone infrastructure, public improvements, and these improvements include roadways, water, recycled water, storm drainage, sewer, and other general capital facilities serving the Folsom Plan Area. Here you have an image of the area that is included in CFD 18. It's outlined in the yellow. This area is located within the southern portion of the city of Folsom and is bounded by US Highway 50, White Rock Road, Prairie City Road, and the El Dorado County Line. Staff is proposing to issue the Series 2024 Special Tax Revenue Bonds in an amount not to exceed $50 million. Proceeds will be used to finance the acquisition and construction of certain public facilities, fund a debt service reserve account, and pay certain costs of issuance. And the primary improvement related to this bond issuance will be constructing about 19,000 linear feet of water transmission pipeline in order to expand water delivery capacity to the CFD 18 area. The recently appraised value of the property within CFD 18 is just under $3 billion. This is in compliance with the city's CFD policies. The value-to-lean ratio is 11.5 to 1, and your policy is at least 3 to 1. Also in compliance with the city's policies, it's a projected tax burden ranging from 1.49% to 1.81% per developed residential property, so under your 2% limit. By taking these actions tonight, you are approving the form of various required documents that are listed here on this slide. You're also authorizing the officers of the city and the Folsom Ranch Financing Authority to execute any and all documents and to take appropriate actions to prepare to issue the bonds. So with that, staff does recommend that the City Council approve Resolution Number 11266 and the Folsom Ranch Financing Authority Resolution Number 012. Thank you.
These are a single action or first readings or something?
Single action.
Okay.
And just to clarify, Stacy, I think this came up in my agenda review. This is not an additional burden on residents south of 50 property tax bill. This is something they're already paying on, correct?
Correct. They're already paying. We're just asking to issue bonds. So instead of it going as pay-go revenue, it'll go to pay debt service. Okay, thank you.
All right, I will entertain a motion if anybody would like to get it.
I'll go ahead and move Resolution 11266. Sorry, Mayor. Didn't mean to go over you.
Oh, my apologies. I need to open the public hearing first. Is there any questions for staff?
No questions.
Okay, do we have any requests to speak?
You have no request to speak on this item.
Okay, then I will close the public hearing and resume requesting a motion.
Yep, I will move Resolution 11266.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please call roll.
Councilmembers Aquino?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Rorba?
Yes.
And Kozlowski?
Yes.
I'll go ahead and move Resolution Number 012.
I'll second.
And the roll, please.
Board members Aquino?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Rorba?
Yes.
And Kozlowski?
Yes. Okay, that brings us to the end of our agenda for the joint meeting of the agencies I mentioned earlier. Consider that adjourned. And we will resume the regular meeting of the Folsom City Council with our opportunity for business from the floor. As has been said many times, business from the floor is the opportunity for the public to comment on items that are not on the agenda. So please, if you have, do we have speaker cards?
You have six requests to speak under business from the floor.
Great, let's do that.
Okay, your first speaker will be Ronald Carter, and Ron Carter will be followed by Jeanette Felts.
Welcome, Mr. Carter.
Good evening. My name is Ronald Carter, former candidate for the City Council in Folsom. Somewhat familiar with the processes before us here tonight. My concerns are major, Major G. I spoke a couple months ago that I would be for it, approve it, if half of it went for law enforcement and administrative justice and the other half for AMT stuff. I've looked into it a little bit closer, so I'm a little bit more qualified to speak on it, but not totally at this time. I'll do my best, from what I know. It appears that the Major G is going to pay for things, for example, that are not then required to be in the budget. That would be the street's water quality 15%, 15% economic development, which I didn't have information previously, and then the major city projects. So if those issues, if I'm understanding them from those that I've spoken to, they're not even, they're like law enforcement, police, they have curves. So they're opposed to it, I've been told. Fire is for it. But going back to those three entities, I don't see where we have, either I'm not understanding it, and that's possible because I haven't had a million percent time to review it, but I don't see where those come into the budget. So if I'm right, those, the 45% there, they wouldn't even be in the budget. And so I'm not sure, but it appears that way. In any event, going directly to Major G, I think it's over taxation. Now, I know I spoke to one of the parties here tonight about the amount and the process, and it doesn't really show that I can see. I mean, it appears that because of online purchases and all that jazz, it's reduced city taxes greatly. But on the other hand, I sat on a committee back in 2004 for South 50, and everything that I advised at the time has never come to pass. They didn't listen to my counsel on how to develop that. So it's developed in a way that's not contingent, or sorry, that's not in the best efforts in putting that project together as it is. There should be some separation there. There's the city taxes, there's the proposals that we have as far as city taxes on properties, 1.25% in California. So with everything said there, I understand that approximately 30% of that money goes to the taxation and all that, because there's supposed to be 7,000 homes out there. And with that said, where's all that money going?
So, Mr. Carter, we give everybody three minutes, and you're at your time right now if you want to make a conclusive statement.
Yeah.
And I will offer to meet with you and give you more detail that you may need.
Well, I'm looking at Folsom, and these Major G's have got signs everywhere, all color, beautiful, wonderful. And those signs cost, I know from experience, about $100-plus each. So with everybody pushing for it on those signs, the opposition to it, I find, to have legitimate reasons. Those legitimate reasons are still being investigated, so to speak.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker will be Jeanette Felts, and Jeanette will be followed by Margie Donovan.
My offer stands for anybody that would like more information about any city service, but with regard to Measure G, I'm happy to meet with you offline.
Hi, I also wanted to address Measure G, although I know, you know, it's a citizen-led measure. I foresee the problem that is kind of the tale as old as time, which is, once you guys know that this money is going to be allocated to those areas, then the money that you guys deal with in the existing budget is going to be allocated to other areas. So it's not, it's, we're just going to end up in the exact same place again. This tax is set to go on eternally. I've read the argument that, that it'll, you know, it has this specific allocation, but then again, the rest of the budget will be adjusted accordingly in future years. And I've seen the argument that other areas in, you know, other Sacramento, Rancho Cordova have a higher sales tax. I would argue that their sales tax is too high, not that ours is too low. The tax burden in California is outrageous. So we don't need new taxes. As far as City Council goes, though, my problem is with this newsletter. This newsletter is five pages of gaslighting that you guys are screwed. Like, we just, we don't have the money, we're not going to be able to fund the areas that you guys know are highest priority for Folsom residents. Safety, fire, police, parks and rec, family lifestyle, you know, you know that those are the top issues for Folsom residents. And this is all five pages of, you guys are just going to suffer a little bit, sorry. And then we have a conclusion of, here's your solution. This is, you guys weren't taking a position, but this is a position. This is an entire page supporting yes on Measure G, everything bright and shiny, here's how you can register to vote, and there is nothing in here about the no on Measure G effort, or the reasons that citizens are opposed to this measure. And I'm, I think that this was really, really poor decision-making on the City Council's part. And you know how much money is behind the yes on Measure G and how little money comes to back and support the no on Measure G. And this was, this was very tacky on the City Council's part, in my opinion.
Thank you for your comments.
Okay, our next speaker will be Margie Donovan, and Margie will be followed by Sarah Norberg.
I'd like to confirm that I am unmuted.
Yep, let me get your volume up, Margie, and then go ahead and start, and I'll start you three minutes.
I heard Mr. Kozlowski addressed me?
Yes, sir, or ma'am, excuse me. Yes.
I am. Good evening, City Councilmembers. I'm Margie Donovan, a resident of the city of Folsom. I want to make one statement about G, and I want to talk about transit. No on G, period. Now about transit. Most residents of the city of Folsom are not aware that as of January 1, Smart Ride will no longer be running in Folsom. That's a detriment to our community. When Henry Lee and team came and presented to the City Council, they mentioned Smart Ride over and over as an option to paratransit. Smart Ride is $1.50 for seniors and people with disabilities, free for students. It is going away. That leaves our fixed route, of which we have one main line, and paratransit, which is $5 a ride. Right now, I lay at home with a brain injury, and I cannot walk to Trader Joe's a mile from my home. It costs me $10 round trip to go there as of January 1. This is unacceptable. We let our transit go to regional transit for better services that were promised. However, the better services are ending. It is very costly to use paratransit to run around this city. And I'm going to ask the city to take a second look at what we're doing. One of the options put on the table is a $5 voucher for Uber, and it can take young children. Uber drivers are not drug-tested. They have no standards to which they go by. They are known nationwide to discriminate against people with service animals and people with mobility aids. That is not an option to replace Smart Ride. We have a City Council member that serves on the RT board, and I ask that you take this back to the RT board meeting. Uber is not an option. It also is not wheelchair-accessible. And right now, they have no plan, definite plans for wheelchair accessibility, and we have wheelchair users in this town. In closing, I would like to ask our mayor, I believe, you're still the Rep. 2 RT Board, is that correct?
I am.
Thank you. I would like you to take these concerns back, especially with Uber not being a viable option for people with disabilities and the elderly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker will be Sarah Norberg, and Sarah will be followed by Bruce Klein.
Good evening, Ms. Norberg.
Hi, everyone. My name is Sarah Norberg, and I'm a longtime listener, first-time complainer. I'm the Secretary of the No on G Citizens Against the Folsom Tax Initiative effort. I attended Folsom's awesome public schools. I live and work here in Folsom, the daughter of a retired correctional officer, and I work as a contractor at Old Folsom Prison myself. I must speak out against not only Measure G, the permanent sales tax increase for the city of Folsom on the November ballot, but also the procedural shenanigans the supporters of the tax increase and even the city have undertaken. The upland loophole now allows citizen-led or citizen group efforts at raising taxes to bypass the 2/3 supermajority that would otherwise be required for decades to raise taxes in California. The city of Folsom therefore enjoys the much lower, simple majority standard, 50% vote plus 1, to pass Measure G in November. Officially, the city of Folsom is quote-unquote "neutral" on Measure G, yet the city wants to have the tax hike both ways. Supposedly citizen-led, with several of those original architects behind the tax measure being retired City of Folsom employees with their underfunded CalPERS pensions on the line, while the city has been on a simultaneous doom-and-gloom public relations messaging campaign for weeks now, all in their efforts to scare Folsom residents into voting to approve the tax increase. I couldn't believe my eyes when I saw the newsletter that arrived in the mail to me on September 13th, within 60 days of the November election, making the case for Folsom's need for revenues and concluding with Measure G on the back page of the newsletter, the implied solution for the budget woes of the city. See the newsletter for yourself. Multiple pages of beautiful graphic design and color delivered to maybe 30,000 Folsom residences, all in the supposed name of educating the voters, but we in Folsom are sophisticated enough to recognize the newsletter as the slanted piece of advocacy that it is, not neutral educational materials as the city would have you believe. FPPC complaints have been filed, yet the city insists on continuing to hold three budget town hall meetings in the immediate run-up to the election, one this Thursday and two in October. I believe the city's newsletter was like an in-kind contribution to the yes-on-G effort, which has no needs for the city's support. They've fundraised close to $200,000 already from big players like developers and engineering firms that stand to gain financially if the tax is passed. Join us in opposition to Measure G. Our website is nofolsomtax.com. Our Facebook page is No on Folsom Measure G. Request your guard sign today. Donate to us on our website. Thank you for your time. Get involved.
Okay, our next speaker will be Bruce Klein, who will be followed by Marty Swindle.
Bruce, I hope you can be as efficient with your time.
I hope I will. Good evening, Mayor, Members of the Council. Bruce Klein, I'm the co-chair of Measure G and a 34-year resident, and no, I'm not trying to protect my pension. You can read the measure, you can learn all about it, and nothing in there, so let's not worry about those scare tactics. I've spoken to hundreds of people as we're walking and talking and trying to educate on Measure G, and many, and contrary to a couple of the positions we've heard, many of the people I talked to say they are thankful that they received this newsletter. It says, it's not saying yes, it's not saying no. I've heard the rhetoric on the no side. I've heard the explanations or quote rhetoric on the yes side. Instead, I get a newsletter that lays out what the situation is. You'd be doing the exact same thing if you had any measure that was looking to change or modify the Folsom municipal code, which is what Measure G does. So this message is not new. The city manager for the last five budget messages has said this over and over and over. In all the run-up to the budget being adopted, the manager had slide after slide after slide articulating the very facts that were laid out in the newsletter. So I think Ms. Councilmember Aquino said it best in response to one of the posts that were out there, is that this is a newsletter, it's facts, it's not advocacy. Quite frankly, that is your duty as a city to educate the folks. Educate our people, tell them what the situation is relative to the city's finances. We've been doing that for a long time. Of course, we're in an advocacy role, and I appreciate what you've done. Failure to educate, you would then be criticized by saying, you never told us. How did this come to be? Yes or no, whatever the folks out there believe and want to vote on, you have done what I believe is your duty. I want to switch topics for a second. I feel compelled to say this, because I watch online rhetoric, and honestly, I'm appalled at what I see directed at our city and our city employees and the people who are doing really good work, and many of you up there as well. The rhetoric is awful, it's vitriolic, it's not necessary. I know all of you, I know many, many of our employees. Every one of those people that I know has the best interests of the city at heart, come to work every day to do a really good job for our community. So let me just say, I'm sorry that that rhetoric is out there, and I apologize on behalf of many of us to your employees who have to see that stuff, because when we talk to people, they are very, very happy with the services that are provided to them day in and day out. So this is not the sentiment of the general resident. So I just felt I had to come up here and say that, and I really value your service, and I really thank you for all that you do.
Thank you, Mr. Klein.
Okay, our next speaker will be Marty Swindle, who will then be followed by Gary Qualsett.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Marty Swindle. I came here tonight to make sure that there wasn't a sign on City Hall that's saying yes for G, because, and there wasn't, but the city's certainly doing everything else its power to make sure this measure passes. At the City Council meeting on July 12th, 2022, the council voted against putting their sales tax measure increase on the November 22 ballot. At that meeting, Councilmember Aquino, you suggested that a citizens committee be created to prepare for the 2024 sales tax increase. Also at that meeting, City Manager Anderson, you commented that the city's consultant suggested the city continue to tell their story of need, and you further commented that the City Council will need to consider which services the city will no longer provide due to revenue shortfalls. This increasing of the sales tax obviously has been floating around City Hall for the past two years, and from what I hear, sounds like it's about five years. So, and earlier this year, the council was again discussing their interest in putting the sales tax increase on the ballot. Upon hearing there was in fact a citizens committee organizing a petition effort, the city, knowing that the citizen proposal would only need 50% plus 1 yes vote, dropped their sales tax proposal like a hot potato. And here we are in September 2024 with a citizens committee comprised of over half of current and former city employees getting their measure on the ballot. Now I hear, like I said, that there's been five cycles, budget cycles, that the city manager has been telling all of you that there's an issue. So my question to the city manager is, is why wait five years to put this newsletter out? This newsletter should have been out five years ago, should have been out two years ago, not 60 days before an election. The, it's kind of convenient that the information just coming out now, right, you know, prior to the election, so it kind of got people wondering. So in my opinion, this whole process of getting this measure on the ballot has smelled from the beginning. While the city's direct involvement will probably never be proved, their indirect involvement certainly can be. A citizens committee was formed by former department heads and employees of the city. The city not having the courage to put forth their tax increase proposal on the ballot, knowing it needed 2/3 yes vote, and the timing of the city finally telling their story of need after two years, five years, knowing this, conveniently just before the election, points towards the city having their hands all over this. All the city had to do was be transparent about all this and start their campaign of need five years ago, not six weeks before the election. I don't attend city council meetings, I don't get involved with politics, but this time it's different. I look at Measure G as a David and Goliath battle. Measure G supporters have the money, expertise, et cetera. Measure G opponents are our true grassroots citizens committee with little money behind their efforts, just their passion. We don't mind a fair fight with Goliath, but when the city is handing extra shields and face masks to Goliath to block our rocks, enough is enough with the election interference. I'm very disappointed in the city that I've lived in for over 30 years. I thought the backroom politics of the former cabal of council members would stop once they were off the council.
Sir, you're past your time. Please conclude.
But it hasn't. It still appears there, it's there and within the fabric of City Hall.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Gary Qualsett.
Welcome back.
Thank you. Hello, honorable City Council members and esteemed appointees of the city. My name's Gary Qualsett. I'm a proud, long-term resident of Folsom. I am saddened and disheartened by the one-sided activity, behavior, and blatantly underhanded promotion of only one side of a tax increase measure, this before the voters of the city of Folsom, and I'm beginning to lose my trust in local government at this moment. A special edition newsletter with only a fiscal focus and none of the other normal content so close to an election is an obvious act of campaign activity and expenditures of public funds towards a cause and measure. And there are even Facebook posts by the city with content and video and prepared statements by city officials about Measure G and purported budget woes. The actions, behaviors, and message of the city are so one-sided and do not present any alternatives, any other possible solutions, impacts, or effects of a tax increase, or not having a tax increase. As a public servant, one should provide balance and equity with the messages being delivered. As you know, I sent you a cease and desist letter via email to the city on an expedited basis the day after the word got out that the city would be sending a special edition fiscal focus newsletter, and I asked that you do not mail that out to all the households in Folsom. I also ask that you cancel and not hold the planned budget town hall meetings presently scheduled over the next few weeks. Usually, public outreach is a really good thing, but in this case, when it is about a political ballot measure up for an impending vote of the public, it's certainly not a good thing. All of the city activities sure appears to be in conflict with government code, election code, political format statutes and provisions dictating what is appropriate and what isn't. At a minimum, government code section 8314 and political format maybe section 82011, 015, and 82025 are just a few of the prime areas where the city should exercise caution. The city has likely exceeded the standards of these and other laws to the point it needs to stop, and it needs to properly report. As public servants, you need to listen to both sides of the issue and maintain a position of neutrality and independence without any bias. I again ask that you cease and desist from your one-sided public messaging campaign related to anything that is on the ballot and up for a vote of the citizens and residents of Folsom. Thank you for your time and consideration. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, you have no further requests to speak under business from the floor.
Okay, that brings us to agenda updates. Do we have any, sir?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. We have additional information transmitted for items 2 and 10 in tonight's agenda. A copy has been previously provided to you, and they are also available on the table in the back.
Terrific. Thank you very much. Okay, that takes us to our consent calendar.
Yeah, you have one request to pull, item number three, from a member of the public.
All right.
And also, I was asked by a member of the public to pull item number two.
Okay. Any questions, or questions or a motion on the remainder?
I'll go ahead and move items 1, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9.
I can second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for the select items.
Okay, Councilmembers Aquino?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Rorba?
Yes.
And Kozlowski?
Yes.
Okay, item number two is Resolution Number 11260. This is a resolution repealing prior Resolution Number 10900 and designated conflict of interest filing. filing positions and disclosure categories.
And maybe, Krista, I think this is your item, maybe you could just give a quick summary. Somebody asked me if this was related to Measure G, and I said, "No, this has absolutely nothing to do with Measure G, this is a routine exercise that we do."
Yeah, that's right, thank you for the question. Yeah, every public agency within California is required to adopt a conflict of interest code, and the purpose of a conflict of interest code is to identify public officials, whether elected or appointed, who have a significant role in making decisions or recommending decisions that could possibly affect them or their families financially. So conflict of interest codes list those positions of employees that would file their financial disclosure statements, and the purpose of that is really for transparency. It's one thing to say public officials should not act in their own financial interests, but the public can only evaluate if they know what those public interests are. And so that is the purpose of a conflict of interest code and that mandated filing. Cities are required to update their code every two years. We updated it in 2022 and 2020, 2018, so this is just a regular thing that the city does every two years. So that's why it's before you tonight.
Okay.
And the state requires it to be done in October, you know, in the fall of every even-numbered years, so that also maybe explains the timing.
Okay. Thank you very much for that. I will go ahead and move adoption of resolution number 11260.
I'll second.
Okay, councilmembers Aquino?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Rorba?
Yes.
And Kozlowski?
Yes.
Okay, item number three was pulled at the request of Justin Raithel. Justin, if you want to come on down, and just for the public, this is resolution number 11261. This is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract renewal extension with Dell for the Microsoft enterprise agreement. Go ahead.
Mayor, councilmembers, my question's pretty simple. The quote is in here from Dell, and it's a per-user license agreement, but we have 658 users. I think we're under 400 employees. I understand having maybe a few extra user accounts, but I was just kind of curious why we have 658 users. Maybe these are utility fund folks that are there, or I'm, maybe I'm just missing something.
Could I ask Stacy to respond to that?
Very, thank you for the question. We have a lot of temporary employees, so they're not listed in the budget as full-time employees, but they do need licensing so that they can access email and all of the other services that Microsoft provides. So that's the difference between the number you would see in the budget for full-time employees versus the licenses that are needed.
Thanks for the clarification.
I'll go ahead and move item number resolution 11261.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Councilmembers Aquino?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Rorba?
Yes.
And Kozlowski?
Aye. Had to get one of those in today.
All right, that takes you to public hearings. Your first public hearing this evening is item number 10. This is ordinance number 1348. This is an ordinance amending sections 10.20, .220, and 230 of the municipal code pertaining to parking in alleys in the historic district. This will be introduction and first reading of the ordinance. Mark?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mark Rackevan, your public works director. I have a very brief presentation for you.
I got you.
Thank you. So the ordinance before you this evening, as the city clerk mentioned, has to do specifically with alleyways, specifically within the historic district. This is an issue that was originally brought to me by my solid waste collection division who has been experiencing an increase in issues where parked vehicles in alleyways has been making it difficult, if not impossible, for them to complete their routes. We believe that this is related in large part to the proliferation of accessory dwelling units in the backs of these historic district homes. So you have new residents that are parking there, you have contractors that are working on those facilities while they're being constructed. So certainly, it was an issue enough for my solid waste division. I did also consult with the fire department about their accessibility of using their equipment in the alleyways for emergency responses. Chief Casano said it's absolutely an issue for them. The picture you see here is our smallest fire engine navigating an alley where there's a parked car on one side, so imagine had there been a car on the other side, that engine, the smallest engine would not be able to go through there, they couldn't use their larger apparatus. And plus, how do the firefighters get out of the vehicle if there are vehicles parked throughout? So it is, it is an issue, it seems to be getting a little bit worse over time, so our recommendation is, unfortunately, we're going to need to prohibit the parking in the alleyways so that we can provide those services. This exhibit shows a comparison of a typical alley in the historic district. On the top, they average 20 feet wide. That means there are some alleys that are only 18 feet wide, and that's without cans and vehicles parked in there, you know, you have trees and shrubbery growing in those alleyways. The paving condition also varies, it's inconsistent, it's obviously a lower standard of paving than we would apply to a street, and because there are no improved edges to the alleyways, we can't mark them as, with painted fire lane striping as well. So, yeah, the top shows you an aerial view and a photo looking down one particular alleyway. There are only a few other examples of alleyways outside the historic district, and those have all been constructed after we adopted an alley design standard of a 24-foot-wide paved alley with marked fire lane on both sides. And so that the lower example is an alleyway outside the historic district that is consistent with the standards that were adopted, you know, in the late 90s, early 2000s, so.
But parking is prohibited in the 24-foot alley as well?
Absolutely, yeah. In that case, we are able to mark it with a red fire lane. So, you know, we don't mean to pick on the historic district, it's just unfortunately the conditions that exist out there are making it difficult for us to convey that we can't have you parking here. So our approach here is, in the municipal code, we have a chapter 10.20 covers parking on public facilities. There, we found a couple of antiquated codes that had to do with parking on the old Folsom Dam Road. A lot of us will remember, you used to be able to drive over that thing, there's even a really cool overlook, and if anybody can tell me where Bug Camp Road is, you get extra points, because I don't remember Bug Camp Road, but that was memorialized in this now antiquated section of our municipal code. So our recommendation is we're going to, we would strike both of these old codes and then reuse those sections to codify the parking restrictions in the historic district. So this is the language that was proposed in your staff report. Again, it just states that, you know, the public portions of these alleyways need to be kept clear, and that the second code says that, you know, we do have the option to tow if the first code is violated. And it is important to point out, and we're talking about the public portion, we do acknowledge that there are some areas of some alleyways where there is enough room to park a car off to the side on private property. We're not trying to be draconian in this, we just want to make sure that the alleyways are unobstructed so that we can provide the services that the public's expecting. You know, you can also see in some of these photos that were provided by solid waste and fire, some people are parking nose-in with the back of their vehicles jutting out, others are parking large vehicles out there, and these are just examples of why this is an issue for our staff. You did receive some additional information from a resident who made some thoughtful recommendations on how to wordsmith what was recommended by staff. We have no objections to those friendly amendments if you choose to go in that direction. This is what, if you were to replace and delete, as the resident suggested, how those ordinances would be worded. I did consult with the police department as well, Chief Hillman, on whether or not this affects the enforceability of either of these ordinances. He said that, you know, this wording is fine with them. I will be clear, while we agree that taking the wording out about requiring signage, we're absolutely in favor of that, I still feel compelled to post it, at least initially, so that we can properly convey to the residents and the contractors that there is now a parking restriction. It'd probably just be one sign per direction at the entrance to each alleyway. They can be removed later on if we feel it's appropriate, but I think it's in our best interest, if we want to properly communicate this new regulation to people and have it be effective, that we go ahead and post the signs. We just won't codify the language.
Excellent.
And that concludes my presentation, happy to take any questions you might have.
Okay, do you guys have any questions?
I don't have questions, but I have comments.
Say a comment, do we have any, yeah, just let me check and see if there's any public comment.
I have some questions.
Okay, we'll do that.
So I appreciated, I saw in the agenda review, I mean, during the agenda review and the packet, that you did consider just, you know, posting it for garbage days, and you could see how, on some of those pictures, you could see how close it was, and that would make sense, that would be a compromise. Did you, have you done any outreach to historic district? I know, and you know, that the concern is about the lack of parking outside of the alleyways. We continue to hear about it. So have you done any outreach to historic district themselves, to the homeowners?
I reached out to the residents association, shared the language with them. I did not get an endorsement from them, but I also did not get any objections from them. They had some questions also about, you know, grace periods, you know, after the regulation were to take effect, and also, actually, you know, the addition of the word, you know, public portion of the alleyways was as a result of my interaction with the residents association, excuse me, the residents association. Originally, we just said, "No parking in the alleyways," and they were the ones that pointed out, "Well, you know, there are some areas that are private property, you know, that could accommodate a vehicle."
So was there any consideration in just posting that you could only park on one side of the alleyway, so, you know, the garbage trucks, and maybe still post that no parking on the alleyway during the garbage days, but that in an emergency, emergency vehicle could get through there? I know this is highly convenient for some people, some residents can't, a few have reached out to me, can't find parking on the main, especially when they're on East Nataoma or one of the mainer, busier roads, that they are kind of forced to park in the alleyway. So has there been any consideration of that or thought process on?
No, you know, in working with the fire department, you know, the concern was that, you know, even with one vehicle parked in there, you know, as in that one picture you saw, I mean, it's very difficult to even get a small engine through there, much less have room for the firefighters to actually do their job. Some of the alleyways, as I mentioned, are even narrower than the average, and so the presence of one vehicle makes it very hard for our solid waste vehicles to maneuver around the vehicle, to pick up the cans, without, you know, potentially hitting the parked vehicle or knocking over the fence on the other side. It's a very complex operation for those drivers, even under ideal circumstances, and so I don't, I don't think we actually ever fully vetted, you know, how you would allow parking on one side but not on the other, but we chose not to really vet that because the concerns are just so significant for both solid waste and fire.
So this may not be a question for you, maybe for the chief, but to drive, if they have to get an engine down an alleyway versus the main street, because there's always a main street and an alleyway, is there a fire hydrant down there? I mean, why would they choose to go down an alleyway versus a main street where there's likely a fire hydrant? Or do they not need a fire hydrant in some cases? If, and I think, you know, the language in here is because it could be a tinderbox, right, where we're worried about fire, so would they choose to go down there anyways if they, if the fire hydrant, is there fire hydrants in alleyways?
Could I ask Chief Casano to respond? Thank you, Mark.
Sorry, Mark.
Hello, Chief.
Good evening. Mayor, councilmembers, that's an excellent question. Councilmember Rorba, the, you know, going down the alleyways, there are no hydrants back there, however, we do have hose that we would connect to a hydrant and either forward lay into the alleyway or do what they call a reverse lay and have another engine take it back out to a hydrant. The problem with these alleyways is that they're, now they're ADUs back there, and if there happens to be a fire in an ADU, we certainly are going to use an alleyway to get to it more effectively. And that's the biggest problem is, these are all, you don't know when it's going to happen, it could be any time of the day or any day. So that's why we typically like to have a minimum of a 20-foot clearance for any roadway that we're going. We do that for all the special events in the historic district on Sutter Street. We make them maintain a 20-foot clearance just in case there is an emergency so that we can get through there.
Do we have an idea how many houses in historic district this would affect? You probably don't know that, sorry.
I do not know that.
But Chief, can I ask you a question? I mean, is it just fire danger we're worried about? I mean, wouldn't this be true of emergency?
It could be any emergency. Medical emergencies, same, you know, our medics are not quite as wide as an engine, but they're still fairly wide.
But oftentimes, an engine is responding before the ambulance gets there.
Usually, there will always will be an engine responding, they're our first responders. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just asked a question, but now I can't remember what it was, so clearly.
How many units are affected?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, I don't know, do you know, happen to know, Pam, how many ADUs are out there?
Okay, that's fine, or houses in general, I mean.
Well, all of them, pretty much.
Right, because it's not just ADUs, all of them are affected.
I mean, there's alleys in each one of the betweens, yeah.
So, you know, obviously, this first reading is going to come back again, so the residents will have time to come back and give input. So, I mean, is there any outreach being done?
We did, as required, post the notice of public hearing in the local newspaper, and then the aforementioned outreach to the residents association.
And one of the things you said was, one of the concerns was about grace periods? What did you come up with that as far as noticing them?
Yeah, so that's just, you know, anytime we make a parking regulatory change, you know, we don't immediately go in and start writing tickets and towing people, we will give a period of time for education, you know, whether it could be in the form of posting flyers notifying what are now illegally parked vehicles of the new regulation and give them an opportunity to self-correct, and if we start noticing repeat offenders who, you know, have been notified and yet still continue to park, then we can at some point transition to enforcement.
Okay.
When would this take effect if we plan to enact it?
So we'll have the second reading in October, and I believe the ordinance takes effect, was it 30 or 45 days afterwards? So it could be as early as November. We're certainly under no requirement to immediately start, you know, we can wait till after the holidays if we feel that's appropriate. It's going to take us some time to develop a sign plan and get all the alleyways signed.
Sure, sure. Okay, other questions?
There's two more readings, two more?
One additional, one more.
One additional, okay, thank you.
All right, is there any public comment?
Okay, this is a public hearing, but you do not currently have any request to speak on this item.
Okay, anybody in the audience have a change of heart and like to weigh in on this one? All right, hearing none, I'll take it back for any comments that you have.
Yeah, I just want to share with Mark, when I saw this, I was actually, thought this was a really great idea, because for eight and a half years now, you know, I've had a business in the historic district, and I enter in on Sutter Street Big Yarowa Alley, and I drive a big truck, which, I mean, to me, it's really big and wide, and there have been times that cars have been parked on the corner building, which makes it very tight for me to get into the area, and, you know, I have to go up against the bushes, you know, just to really kind of squeeze my way through. There have been a couple of ADUs that have been built in this back alley, and I have thought, if there's an emergency and an ambulance needs to get back here, it is going to be difficult, because at times, I mean, I am really squeezing my way into the alley, even I have four parking spaces in the back. the back. But it, I can totally understand how this is a, what are those issues where we just haven't had an emergency that has been detrimental, because it just hasn't happened. But in the event of something happening, a fire or a medical emergency, and there, that, you know, the alley is tight, and it's not just mine, it could be any, because there are several different alleys, how detrimental it could be to saving someone's life. So I think this is a really good idea. It's good for the district. And so, you know, I don't know how many cars may be affected, but I stand on this, that if there are no events, there's plenty of parking in the district. I, I drive it often, and I, just to keep my, you know, pulse on parking availability. And so, it's, but I think it is, for the sake of public safety, it is a really good idea. That was it.
Could we go back to the proposed language, please? Thank you. So I do agree with this recommendation to get rid of the word "stop," because I'm thinking about somebody who, you mentioned construction, maybe a construction crew wants to just stop their vehicle for a second, unload materials, or you've come back from a big shopping trip and you want to unload materials. Maybe you have somebody who has limited mobility and they need to, you know, you want to drop them off in the alley or something like that. So I am in favor of this. I'm just wondering, no person shall park or like maybe leave unattended any vehicle?
I think that's very-
Whether it's attended or not, I think leave standing makes, tells the story. That's a matter of enforcement.
Well, it's still standing even if you're sitting in there. Is that kind of what you're saying, is it's a little ambiguous?
Well, I'm just thinking, I mean, yeah, I guess I don't know. So if you're sitting in there and you're in park, but you're in the vehicle, is that, is that what that's referring to? I mean, but then you would, you could tell if a garbage truck was coming or an emergency vehicle, and you could move out of the way.
Standing is actually a, a term that is in the California vehicle, I believe it's defined in the California Vehicle Code. And so, you know, we, we try to be consistent with the terminology from, from those laws.
Okay, all right. Well, I, nevertheless, I agree with taking out the word "stop."
So does standing mean unattended?
If I may assist, so standing, Mr. Mayor, member of the city council, standing could mean the vehicle is stopped, not put in park, not put in park, but this vehicle is still obstructing traffic.
Because it could technically mean unattended or attended. You could be in your car, stopped, or you could park it and then get out, right?
In either instance.
Yeah, 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 okay.
So what would the sign say? No parking and no standing? I mean, is anybody going to understand that?
It would, it would say, "No parking," and reference the municipal, this section of the municipal code.
Oh, okay, okay. But I like your train of thought, Sarah, because I think you're right. If I had a bunch of groceries and I was in an ADU, I would go to the alley, knowing you could get out of the way if emergencies, I mean, if there's fire next door, you would be not worried about your groceries. So maybe let's be clear on, on, because they're going to do it anyways. I mean, human behavior, right? They're going to do it anyway. So maybe it's just to leave unattended for any, you know, period of time. So maybe it's a little wordsmithing there, because I think that leave standing is unclear, and people are going to unload whatever they need to, to unload.
Hold on, if I could just interject. I'd say that, you know, that's, that's certainly not our objective to, you know, to, you know, keep people from, you know, doing that behavior. Our concern is that when there's a vehicle left there unattended for a long period of time, you know, at, at any given time, we, we won't know. But if we're going to, if we're going to institute enforcement, by the time police or code enforcement shows up, the vehicle that you're describing will have probably completed their task and be gone. It's the vehicles that are still there by the time that enforcement is necessary. Those are the vehicles that are really the subject of these ordinances.
Mark, I pay attention to the signs that say "no parking anytime," and it's clear-cut, simple, direct. I know not to park in those areas. Isn't that something, what, what it would say?
Yes.
No parking anytime?
No parking anytime, and, and then we would cite the municipal code.
Mm-hmm. I'm good.
Okay. I was just going to suggest, between now and when we do the other reading of this, that it wouldn't be terrible to just send a note to the homeowners in the affected area, so that it's absolutely plain that we're going to be considering this at our next meeting, or at that meeting, whenever it comes up.
Yes, sir.
And can I just make a recommendation, maybe the building owners? Because I mean, I mean, I've got a business back there, but I may not get that letter, whereas the building owner may get it.
If you provide enough copies, I will walk through and flyer everybody's house or business. How about that? Because I will end up taking the heat for this one, if there's any to be had. Okay, very good. Any, this is a first reading, so.
But we need to have a motion.
Yes.
So I will move the introduction and first reading of ordinance number 1348.
I'll second.
Clarity on-
Do you want to clarify the language that you do not want as part of that motion, please?
I agree with the language as edited here.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So we have a motion. Second is good on that motion, using the edited language on the screen.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Councilmembers Aquino-
Yes.
Rodriguez-
Yes.
Lorba-
Yes.
and Kozlowski.
Yes. Okay, just call the next item. Thanks, Mark.
Your next public hearing this evening is item number 11. This is the Folsom Heights Small Lot Vesting Tentative Subdivision Map Amendment and Determination that No Further SEQA Review is Needed. Before you is going to be resolution number 11263, approving a small lot vesting tentative subdivision map amendment for the Folsom Heights subdivision project.
Thank you. Good evening, council members. Josh Kincaid with the Community Development Department. And tonight, I'll be discussing the Folsom Heights Small Lot Vesting Tentative Subdivision Map Amendment Project. Here we see the majority of the Folsom Heights project, located south of 50, on the far eastern side of the Folsom Plan area, directly adjacent to El Dorado County to the east. The road that is highlighted to the east, Prima Drive is the subject of tonight's item specifically. For a little bit of project background, the Folsom Heights subdivision project included a general plan amendment and specific plan amendments. It was first approved in 2016. The following year, the large lot and small lot vesting tentative subdivision maps, design guidelines, and inclusionary housing plan were approved for 530-unit residential and commercial developments. The small lot map was extended in 2019, and again in 2021 for three-year periods. So as part of the small lot map approval, there were two conditions regarding Prima Drive. This was a bit unusual as, as Prima Drive itself is located in El Dorado County, but it does connect to Folsom Heights within, within the city boundaries, and construction of the road is being handled by the applicant. There was initially discussion about the road being fully operational, but council added condition number 182, you can see here, stating that the road shall be constructed as a gated or bollard-controlled emergency vehicle access route only. The condition also stated that the EVA, emergency vehicle access, would accommodate pedestrian and bicycle access. Here we see a copy of the approved subdivision map, showing where Prima Drive would connect to Folsom Heights. And here we see the approved off-site improvement plan for Prima. The whole road was a public utility easement as well, and includes water and sewer lines. So during the planning commission and city council meetings, and since that time, residents of the adjacent Stonebrier subdivision in El Dorado Hills did express many concerns about the road being open for pedestrian and bicycle use for aesthetic, safety, and liability reasons. The applicant did revisit the need for the road to be an EVA with the Folsom Fire Department, and as shown in the letter provided in the staff report by the fire department, we are comfortable removing the EVA access to the road. So we found that, given the extensive amount of public access along Savannah Parkway, Mangini Parkway, Empire Ranch Road, and White Rock Road, and improvements within the area that have occurred since the initial approval of the map, including the new fire station 34, emergency vehicle access concerns have now been sufficiently addressed without the necessity for the Prima Drive EVA. So with that, the applicant is asking to remove the conditions of approval that we saw earlier regarding Prima Drive. As noted on this updated plan sheet, the EVA roadway and storm drain improvements would be removed, and the road would be maintained as a gated gravel service road for the El Dorado Irrigation District, EID, with their water and sewer lines to remain underneath. Staff notes that the, with the removal of these conditions, no sidewalk, bicycle lane, curb gutter, or asphalt paving would be present on the road. Staff did coordinate with EID, El Dorado County, and the Rolling Hills Community Service District, who owns the land where the EID access easements located. And all parties were in agreement to support the removal of these two conditions. The staff found that this action was not, would not constitute substantial change to the approved SEQA document for the project, and we sent notices to neighbors within 300 feet, including those in El Dorado County, and also placed a notice in the paper. And while we did receive some questions about the project, we did not receive any formal comments. The planning commission did hear this item at its August 28 meeting and voted unanimously to recommend approval to city council. So with that, we do recommend that the city council approve the map amendment via resolution. Thank you.
Any questions from the council? Okay, do we have public comment?
Yeah, this is a public hearing this evening, and you have two requests to speak under this item. First request will be Price Walker, and Price will be followed by Ellen Post.
That's perfect order, I think, tonight. Price Walker with Elliot Holmes, council members. Thank you for having me up here today. This is a, for those, there's a few of you that were around when this was approved. It's a very controversial issue at the time. We purchased the property after the approval, and so we kind of inherited the controversy, and we've been kind of working through it ever since. And I just want to thank everybody that's had patience with this, this item. Several of the council members have been involved with this, as well as staff. And we couldn't have got here without your staff working directly with, with El Dorado County. And I really want to especially thank your, your city engineer, Rebecca, and Josh, who really went out of their way to, to help get this done, and, and the fire chief as well. And I think it's a win-win-win. I think it's a win for Elliot. I think it's a win for the community neighborhood that we're in. And it's, and it's really a win for the city, I think, too, to, to do away with this, because it's not needed now. It's one of those instances where patience paid off. We weren't in a hurry to, to develop this property after purchasing it, because we were doing something else up the street, around the corner, and turned out that everything else built up around us. And all of a sudden, there's a lot of access. And so this was no longer needed. So it's really, I think, a good thing for everyone. So I just urge you tonight to, to approve this, and we will no longer have Prima Drive. It'll, it'll just be a EID utility easement.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, next speaker is Ellen Post.
Ellen, welcome back.
You don't remember me, though, I don't think.
Sure.
So I'm representing myself. I'm the closest to the development a few yards away. Stonebrier neighborhood in El Dorado Hills, and also the CSD, Rolling Hills. Other people had other things to do tonight. We're very happy to have this outcome, hoping you will make it so. It's been a long, long road. I don't want to go over any of that. But everybody is on board with that. The CSD voted unanimously also that that would be a good thing. So that's all I have to say. I don't even need my three minutes tonight. And I, I'm not a Measure G voter, so that's good, too. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Okay, you have no further request to speak on this item.
Okay. Any hot takes on this one?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask that we close public hearing formally, please?
My apologies. Public hearing is officially closed.
Thank you, sir.
All right. And I will entertain a motion if there's no comment.
I'll make a motion to move resolution 11263.
I'll second.
Very good. We have a motion in a second.
Councilmembers Aquino-
Yes.
Rodriguez-
Yes.
Lorba-
Yes.
and Kozlowski.
Yes. Quite welcome. Now we've got a secure border, and we can keep you people out. I'm kidding. We want you to come visit all the time. Okay, we are to council requests for future agenda items. Anything need to be put on the table? Okay, hearing none. City manager report.
Thank you, Mayor. The Folsom Fire Department invites the community to a formal dedication and grand opening ceremony for the new fire station 34 on Thursday, September 26. That's the day after tomorrow. The event will begin at 10:00 a.m. and will conclude with a fire engine push-in ceremony. The grand opening ceremony will also include tours of the new station, and light refreshments will be served. Fire Station 34, which is located at 3255 Westwood Drive in the Folsom Ranch community, is a modern single-story facility and the first fire station south of Highway 50. Folsom High School students will hold their homecoming parade on Wednesday, September 25. Motors should be aware of road closures along Coloma Street, Sutter Street, Reading Street, and Lees Dorf Street from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. to accommodate the event. Please join the Folsom Police Department on Wednesday, October 2nd for Coffee with a Cop. Join officers for coffee and conversation from 8:00 to 9:30 a.m. at Coffee Republic at 6610 Folsom Auburn Road. This is a great opportunity to meet local officers and celebrate National Coffee with a Cop Day. And finally, thousands will honor local veterans at the annual Wayne Spence Folsom Veterans Day Parade on Monday, November 11. The route begins on East Bidwell in front of the Target Home Good Shopping Center and ends at the Folsom Community Center. The city of Folsom is accepting parade entries through Friday, October 25, and you can find entry forms on our website. Thank you, Mayor.
All righty. Council comments? Anything?
I do.
Please.
So I was, I went to an event last night. I was invited. It was, it's called Helping One Woman, H-O-W. You can look it up on Facebook. It was just something I didn't know that was in Helping One Woman, the chapter in Folsom. And they just help, you nominate someone at the event, and then the next month or two, or if they have it within one or two months, they highlight that woman and raise money for whatever they're going through. Last night, it was someone that had a childhood, or not a child, well, a young man had passed several months ago. And it was just a really nice thing. I saw a lot of new people that I haven't seen in the community. And so I just, I'm putting that out there for people that are interested in giving to people and being intimate and meeting other women, sorry, men, to help someone that's struggling. And it was just a really, really nice dinner and evening. So that was really lovely, something that's happening in Folsom I think people should know about. The other thing is, I had, had contacted Assemblyman Hoover's office about an issue with some encampments that we continue to have on department of Fish and Game and Wildlife property, which our police officers are unable to enforce our city ordinances on those properties. So we're working all together right now with the hot team, with the chief, with the Department of Fish and Wildlife, and with Hoover's office. And also, I've contacted the county sheriff's department on, we've got a quote on how much it will cost to remove these very, very large encampments, and it's astronomical, actually, compared to the other encampments, the price of the other encampments they've removed throughout the last couple of months. The hot team is doing a great job. They're really, really busy. They're ripping through their budget as far as, you know, cleanouts, which is a good thing. So I'm still working with Hoover, with Josh Hoover and the state on how to accomplish this task of getting these removals, who can pay for it, and then also on who can continue to monitor and update it. So I just wanted to let the public know that we're working on the three largest ones in Folsom, and hopefully, there'll be some good things that happen in the next month or two.
Elaine, several years ago, we had a really good contact with Fish and Wildlife that, back when Officer Zalaya was overseeing this, and they were super responsive. They would, they would do their part on the cleanup. Maybe we can make that contact again. And the reason why I know this is because when I would go out with, with Zalaya, Fish and Wildlife representatives would show up at these locations. And, and it was a very positive outcome. They would clean up, so.
We, we met, we met with, there were three people. One in the lobbyist for them, one in the enforcement, and another, the regional representative. So they were all in attendance, and they were all willing, and very, very, even Assemblyman Hoover said this was a very positive thing. So we have everyone that we need in, involved in the conversation. So we have everyone that we need in, involved in the conversation. It's just a matter of figuring out who's going to actually fund the project going forward. So it's the fun part of it.
Always the last mile, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks for that. All right. Sure, you don't have a book report? Okay, all right. Couple of things. Ms. Donovan, if you're still on the line, we actually had an RT meeting last night, and the hot topic was the, just how we're going to deal with the RT Smart Ride program. I was going to report on that this evening anyway. There were quite a few transit advocates at the meeting to argue the same case that Ms. Donovan made earlier tonight. The, the sort of brass tacks of this, though, is that the Smart Ride program costs something like $8 million annually to run, and the grant funding that has paid for it from Measure A is no longer available. Measure A created a budget for something, some creative transit solutions when it was first passed, and then it wasn't used for many, many years. And so it built up a big budget of, you know, something like $24 million at one point. And since Smart Ride was conceived back in 2018, 19, that's what's been paying for Smart Ride. Unfortunately, that budget is depleted, and there isn't another obvious grant source to continue paying for that particular service. So that's the reason why RT is looking for an alternative. A perfect alternative has not been identified yet. The initial proposal was to, as, as Margie mentioned earlier, to provide up to $25 vouchers that could be used for Uber rides. That would be kind of a 50-50 split because the way Smart Ride works, you're constrained to a zone, and rides within a zone are relatively short. So that is, should be a ride on Uber that's $10 to $12. So it's a subsidy of five against 20 of those monthly. There are people that are super users of Smart Ride. It's very convenient, and it's an excellent service, but unfortunately, the budget is not there to continue it in its, in its exact form. So we had a extensive discussion last night. We were going to revisit this one at a future RT board meeting with some more ideas, how to, how to deal with accessibility and, you know, what, what we do going forward, because there are limitations to what Uber can do. So anyway, just an update on that for everybody. And then two really great things happened over the weekend. Community Service Day, the 11th Community Service Day took place on Saturday, and we had 2,000 volunteers out there doing dozens and dozens and dozens of projects. So huge success, and I want to thank the organizers of that. So Tom Hellman and the other folks from the city staff, and Sandy Economy and the whole planning committee for the, for the event. It was a huge success, and we had lots of sponsorship, so Dignity Health pitched in, local churches and everything. So it was really excellent. And then I got to wear my Community Service Day to go to give a commendation to the 151st Eagle Scout from Troop Number 94 here in Folsom. So congratulations one final time to Max Woznick, one of our Folsom High School juniors, his mom Diane, and their whole family for that high achievement. Congratulations. With that, I will call the meeting to close. We are adjourned.